Tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. If I can ask you all to please rise for tonight's invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Matt McCollum of Trinity Presbyterian Church, a regular attender at our council meetings, and we thank you for that. And also, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks. Let's pray. God, as we reflect on this past year, we're mindful of how difficult that has been for so many, and we remember that it is you who remains faithful when all else falls away. Your promise of deliverance sustains us, so we trust not in ourselves but in your goodness alone to meet our daily needs. You have sheltered your people in the past. We watch for signs of your presence among us still. We thank you especially for this season, when we remember that you indeed are God with us and for us. We now ask your blessing on our local leaders, God our mayor and city council, with your wisdom and discernment. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend McCollum. Busy season for you?
We keep the pace going, yeah.
All right, very good. All right, council, first order of business, I'm going to ask someone to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda and for item number 30, the item number 32, to add a resolution for the purchase of an F-150 pickup truck for the police department. You should have all been given this, a copy of this proposed resolution before tonight's meeting. And also to delete item number 18 regarding the engineering for the wastewater treatment plant from the agenda. So I, may I entertain a motion to amend the agenda to make those two changes?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the agenda has been amended. Thank you, council. Okay, agenda item one, approve the amendments of the November 23 regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings. Does anybody have any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor approving those minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to report last time on the council agenda that the council authorized us to donate the bikes that we were going to surplus to charity. We were able to compile 11 bikes that were in really good shape. We just had to air up the tires, make a few minor adjustments to those, and we were able to donate those to the Rotary Youth Club, so we're excited about being able to do that. Also, I think the chief also reported in the work session that the message board that you approved for purchase through the CARES Act funding will be here on Thursday, so thank you for that. And also, the app, the phone app that y'all approved through the CARES Act funding, we are vetting that now, really excited about that. I think it's going to be a great communication tool for the city, and we hope to release it the first week of January. It will already be implemented the last week of December, but we'll release that the first week of January. So I'm all excited about those things. Also, I just did want to announce that we do plan to cancel the city's New Year's Eve event in light of COVID. We just don't feel like that's going to happen this year. We did not want to encourage any gathering, and y'all know better than anyone that the tents do create a gathering and also the stage and the ball drop, so we will not be doing that this year. And also, Mardi Gras, we have had two organizations canceled. We expect the third one in the Haven, obviously, to also cancel this week, so it looks like Mardi Gras will not happen in Fairhope this year. So really disappointed in that, but think that it was probably the best decision for our community to keep us safe and healthy. Also, we are continuing to work with Thomas Hospital and Baldwin County EMA in regards to COVID on the vaccine release. We will be working hand in hand with Thomas Hospital on Wednesday as they start giving those vaccinations. The police department is going to be present just in case there's any issues when the vaccines are beginning to be administered. And of course, first responders is in the first, second round of vaccines, so we've been in constant contact with them and the police department to find out, you know, who might want the vaccine and how we can make that happen for them. I also wanted to just commend two, commend an employee and also two other groups. Thank you too to Trinity Presbyterian, I think Matt's in the audience, and they were, they've been kind enough the past several years to do a drive-through nativity. Last night, over 400 cars went through that nativity, and just a great thing, I just love it. I go every year and think it's just, this year more than anything, I think that people really needed that, so I appreciate them continuing to do that. Also, Sheriff Hoss Mack commended Officer Becky Woodruff, who's part of the Mobile Crime Unit. As some of y'all might know, there was a double homicide in Alberta earlier this year from two walkers, who were here from Washington State. Really commended Officer Woodruff for being part of that Mobile Crime Unit and thanked the city for their participation in it, because having her and some of the other officers as investigators on that and the technology really led to being able to solve those crimes. So he was really complimentary of Becky and our participation in that program. So thank you, council, for allowing that. And also, too, wanted to thank the marine science group at Fairhope High School. They were on our beach today doing some cleanup, and we appreciate them doing that. It's Ms. Leslie Charles, the biology teacher and sponsor of the Marine Life Club, were down today collecting, they collected over 24 pounds of mostly cigarette butts and microplastics, but we appreciate them doing that. Okay, and I think that's all. Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item will be public participation. This is, as it relates only to agenda items, number six through 32. Number five is a separate item, it has its own public hearing. So if you want to address the council on agenda items six through 32, 32 being the added agenda item of the purchase of the pickup truck, if you'll please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Not sure, other than Reverend and a couple of members of the media, that we have any public here. I believe everybody else is an employee, so we'll give them an opportunity. All right. I'll close public participation for agenda items and remind everyone that we'll have another opportunity to address the council for non-agenda items at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments. Councilman Martin.
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and stay safe. I'm happy to hear that the vaccines are going out, and I think it's a blessing and it's a beginning to an end of something that's been a burden on all of us for so long, so I'm very happy and prayerful of that. Other than that, happy, happy, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman McConyers?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone as well, and I'd really like to throw out a special thank you to all the teachers and the principals of Baldwin County Schools. I mean, they have done a tremendous job of trying to make this school year as normal as possible. That's been an almost impossible task in a year like this, but they have really done a tremendous job of trying to keep things normal. And I think we're, it looks like now at least we're going to successfully complete the first semester in person, and you know, whatever happens over Christmas break, you know, I think they've got a good plan in place for coming back, taking that slowly. And also throw out a happy birthday to my dad, his dad, his birthday was a couple days ago, and he usually is watching, so if you're watching, Dad, Happy Birthday.
Very good, son.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brown?
Yep, just continue to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, stay safe in your travels, and also want to let everybody know, you can cancel a parade, but you can't cancel Mardi Gras, that's based on lunar calendar. That's all I got.
Counselman Boone?
Yeah, again, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Christmas and a Happy New Year, or Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Had something weighing on my mind here, we've had a tragic loss, not we didn't, but the world did. Pretty stupid loss in Gulf Shores this couple of weeks back, where had some drunk driving, accident, lost a 16-year-old. And I would hope that everybody would understand that please don't drink and drive and ruin somebody's Christmas, or your Christmas, or anybody's Christmas by making a bad, bad decision. So please stay safe out there and have a Merry Christmas and a Good New Year.
Okay, I want to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas. We do have a meeting on December the 28th, so I wish everybody a Happy New Year at that meeting, unless everybody's planning on taking off, and I wasn't, I wasn't in on it. You'd be here by some time. If we were counseling that or not. Also, I do want to mention, I want to give a thank you to all of our utilities and Public Works Department for all of the cleanup efforts. We're getting near the end, as Richard told us, in the work session. So it's important that people that may be watching this tonight know how much they've worked and the utility departments have worked. They're down to just the stumps, the large items which they think that they will complete by the end of this week. And you know, at the beginning of this process, you know, people were impatient, I believe, and they wanted everything picked up in front of their house, you know, right away, and, but we got to these people pretty quickly, and I think people started seeing the efforts that were being made. And I want, I want the citizens that are watching tonight, and I want you to tell your friends and family to, to tell these people that work for the city, thank you for the job that they did. You may not have been first on the list, but they did get to you. And I know as we work down that list, there were some one-offs, and I know that council members and the mayor, I'm sure, were called by everybody that said, please pick up this or that. And I know that the city tried to accommodate all of those requests, and a lot of people had good reasons for doing so. So thank you for that. I think that we still have a lot of reconstruction to undertake due to the damages of Hurricane Sally, a lot of those assessments are, you know, we have to still deal with the insurance companies and with FEMA and others to put certain things back together, but the debris and the CND that's been removed from the roadways and the hundreds of thousands of cubic yards, you've done an outstanding job. And so people, please thank these people every time you see them. On the radio this morning also, there were, there were questions about other infrastructure, whether it be your cable provider, whatever that might be, and some cables are still down, and thank those people too. They're not, they don't work for the city, but they're trying, you know, they got a family they want to go home to. They're working late hours, they're just, they're just doing a job. So be mindful as we go through this season, be thankful for all of those people, and God bless everyone. Thank you. With that, I'll close council comments, and we will move on to item five, which is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, Article III, Section C, dimensions and standards amending item five waterfront lights. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Simmons, I know that you went through this exercise in the work session, I'll ask you to do it again in this meeting, please.
Thank you, Council President. And I will make this brief, it's recorded, so if the public would like to see the comments from the work session, it's there, so I'll try to move this one along. This is a, an amendment to adding a section on waterfront lots or amending a section on waterfront lots. A couple of years ago, we received some comments from, from owners of waterfront lots, and that's specifically on Mobile Bay, not tributaries and other watershed creeks, watersheds, to be allowed to put accessory buildings on the street side. So the solution there was make the waterfront, the, the front of lots and the street side the rear, which would allow those garages to, to be on the street side. Side effect of that is that prevented people then from being able to put pools, gazebos, you know, those type structures on the waterfront side of, of their lots, which some of those lots are 800 feet deep. I mean, they're, they're quite large. So this is an amendment to address that and allow that to be used appropriately. I've shown some graphics here, and there is a distinction when we say front setback line, front yard, front of building, all three of those things mean something different to us. It is specific, so instead of reading that language, we'll, we'll look at the pictures and show what that is. The right-hand side drawing shows a standard water, Mobile Bay is the front, there is a front yard abutting that, and the rear yard is in the street. As typical, anyone in the town can do, they are allowed to put an accessory building in the rear yard. What we're adding here is accessory building structures may also be in front of the principal structure. So this would be okay, is circled in green, that accessory structure in front of the principal structure, but not in the front yard. To the side of the principal structure is okay, is also okay, as long as it's in the principal building area. Putting a building in the required front yard is, is not allowed, or in the required set, side yard is not allowed. Again, in the rear yard is A-OK, and just to cover all our bases, we do, this comes up quite frequently, structures built over submerged state lands are exempt from the front and side rear setback requirements for accessory structures. So we don't really look at those, we don't consider those part of the, there's some repairian rights, you know, arguments you can get, some, as old as some of our lots are, the lot line extends halfway across, you know, or into the bay. I mean, it's a pretty long lots on there, and we treat the, the land portion of that as the front yard. So boat house, pier, things like that, we don't look at for his zoning code. I think they get a very little bit of review for electrical, and I'll check with Eric. Only electrical from, as a building permit, but that's the only review there. So that was, that's the only questions I have, I can answer, that's the only statements I have, I'll answer any questions or can flip back if I need to.
Questions, council? No. Okay. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this proposed amendment? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask council, they'll just let this lay over until the next scheduled council meeting for final consideration. Thank you. Item six is a resolution, the city council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Baldwin County Commission, the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office, the Baldwin County Public Schools, otherwise known as the Baldwin County Board of Education, and the City of Fairhope regarding the school resource officer program at Baldwin County Public Schools by amending Part Two, employment of school officers of the MOU to add an additional SRO at Fairhope High School. You'll see the complete resolution in your package, council. As discussed in the work session, there was just the omission of a second SRO at, at Fairhope High School, which we already had two there, and this was just a correction on that MOU. So if I may entertain a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the amendment to the MOU?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution, Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an indemnity agreement between Oak Hollow Farm Incorporated and the City of Fairhope for the city's Christmas event for city employees at The Barn on Friday, December 18, 2020, from 12:00 PM to 3:30 PM. Mayor briefed us on this. There'll be a drive-through for employees to receive their lunches at 1:00 PM. Prior to that, there will be social distancing enforced at this gathering, no more than six per table, and outdoors will be available for seating as well, so. Any questions for the mayor? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the indemnity agreement?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight is a resolution, the City of Fairhope authorizes acceptance of the grant award from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency through the Baldwin County Commission and authorizes the mayor to sign the cooperative agreement between Alea Baldwin County EMA, the Baldwin County Commission, and the City of Fairhope. And I believe this is for a grant to purchase approximately 400 barricades for use by the Public Works Department and the Police Department for events for the safety and welfare of our citizens, and I will entertain a motion to authorize acceptance of the grant.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution, the City of Fairhope authorizes Mayor Sullivan to sign the subrecipient funding agreement between the Baldwin County Commission and the City of Fairhope for the state homeland security grant in the amount of $50,000. And this is in relation to item number six for the school resource officer. Is that, not it?
No, in relation to number eight.
Oh, that's for number eight. I'm sorry, that is for the barricade. I thought I covered that in the work session. You were writing. All right. To cover, it is ironically the same cost for a school resource officer, is that not correct? Okay. All right, so I stand corrected. That is to fund the grant for the barricade, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the subrecipient funding agreement.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Other than to say Jack, get it right next to him? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 10 is a resolution to hereby amend the change to the selection committee for the Restore Act of the 2012 Grant Project Contracts to be comprised of the mayor, council president, an additional member of the city council, the public works director, the planning and zoning manager, a utility superintendent, and the city treasurer. Entertain a motion to modify the selection committee for the Restore Act? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would assume it doesn't, it may stay in the language, let me peek real quick. It doesn't say, but mayor, you will pick the utility superintendent?
Yes, based on what project we're doing, whether it's a sewer project or possibly electric project.
Oh, okay, so it may be a different utility superintendent that comprises, depending on the, okay, very good. All right, thank you for that clarification. All right, any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 11 is a resolution, the mayor Sullivan is authorized to execute the First Amendment to the PCS site agreement as presented between the City of Fairhope and T-Mobile South for the leased area located at 59 Rochon Street in Fairhope, Alabama. I just want to preface this vote by saying that, Clark, you have reviewed the agreement that was sent to our consultant, and he confirms that that was the agreement that was agreed upon between he and the, and T-Mobile's agents, correct?
That is correct, both of those.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and say for both of these site locations, and as mentioned in the work session, the, the rent is increased quite a bit on these towers, and also upon closing, they will pay for both of these sites. This, this item and the next item, a one-time fee of $5,000, and that will offset the cost of our consultant. In fact, I think we may even come out a little to the good on that as well. And mayor, if this, if these are both approved, they have asked that you go ahead and digitally sign these agreements maybe as soon as tomorrow, tomorrow morning, and we'll let them know so that those things can get moving, although they don't really take effect for a while. I don't know if they're trying to close them out by the end of the year, but you know, they want to, they want to end it. I told them that I'd ask you to do that.
They're in my inbox, waiting on your approval.
All right, okay. All right, very good. So do we have a motion for item 11 to authorize the mayor to proceed and execute the First Amendment to the PCS site agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 12 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is authorized to execute the First Amendment to the PCS site agreement as presented between the City of Fairhope and T-Mobile South LLC for the leased area located at 16290 County Road 3, Point Clear, Alabama. Same goes for this resolution. I believe it's all been looked over by the consultant, and I will ask, same, same amount of rent, and I'll ask you to make a motion to authorize the mayor to proceed.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope hereby terminate the contract titled Professional Services for Advertising and Public Relations for Extension Number Two between the City of Fairhope and Hummingbird and South pursuant for termination for convenience clause found in the standard terms and conditions, item number 58, and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to sign the necessary paperwork. I know Mayor Sullivan covered this in the work session. Would you like or her to repeat any of those details? All right, I will then ask for a motion to terminate the contract.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope hereby terminates the contract titled Fairhope Connect Printing Bid, bid number 29-18 for extension number two between the City of Fairhope and SMW Resources Incorporated Doing Business as Postmark Inc. pursuant for termination for convenience clause found in standard terms and conditions, item number 58, and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to sign the necessary paperwork. I will entertain a motion to terminate the contract?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the city council approves a selection of steward engineering to perform on-call professional engineering services for the electric department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and a not, establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Would anybody like Mr. Allison to review this once again? I think that they've been performing this on-call services for a while for the city Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the selection of steward engineering.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 16 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to bid number 25-19, replacement of the electronic doors for the Justice Center for an additional time for completion of the project requested by the awarded contractor. Approval of the extension of the contract completion by 14 days from December 29, 2020 to January 12, 2021, and award the change order to Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated. So basically, a 14-day extension to get those doors replaced. I will entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to execute the change order. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution, the mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Sawgrass Consulting LLC to perform professional consulting services for the proposed Morphe Avenue Substation Site Plan and redesign of the existing detention pond for the electric department with a not-to-exceed amount of $39,780. And this would be for the civil engineering in the existing detention pond for the proposed substation to go on that site. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Allison? Okay, no questions, I will ask for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 18 was pulled from the agenda tonight. Moving on to item 19, this is a resolution, the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Payne Management Incorporated Doing Business as Payne Environmental Services to perform professional consulting services for water and wastewater risk and resilience assessment in preparation of an emergency response plan for the water and wastewater systems with a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000. Once again, we mentioned in the work session, something we have to do, it's an unfunded government mandate that we're required to do, so I'll ask you for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for Jason? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 20 is a resolution to award the bid for the Nichols Substation Fence for the Electric Department to Gulf Coast Fence Company with a total bid proposal of $30,250. I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution to award the bid for the replaster of the pool at the Rec Center for the Recreation Department to Cox Pools with a total bid proposal of $67,750. And as I mentioned in the work session, I'm asking the council to reject all bids. I believe that we can, and it may come back to the same company, I don't know, I have nothing against them. We may only get one bid, but I just, I don't want to set too much of a precedent when I know that it's possible to get lower bids. I think that we can expedite this, and I believe at the break, I talked to the city attorney. Would you like to just brief the council on what you told me at the break?
Yeah, I talked to Councilman Martin real quick, and you also, Councilman Brill, that I believe with Title 39, contract bids, if you only have one bidder, you have the eligibility to reject all. You can accept it, of course, but you can reject all of them, or you can negotiate a lower price with the one, or you have the option of going out for informal bids that are not subject to Title 39 requirements. So I think it may be in the best interest if we're trying to go ahead and expedite this, get some informal bids, and the same bidder can actually leave that informal bid in place or rebid the thing, but we can also go to other entities and get those bids as well, without the formal requirements going back out for advertising and such.
And unfortunately for that bidder, they're, you know, their bid's been shown to everyone to kind of, you know, I don't know if it puts them at an advantage or disadvantage or not, but it might. And I hate that, and I hate that I'm asking this. It may turn out to be a moot point, but I just, I may be the only one in here that's had some experience with this, this year recently, and I just have reasons to believe that we didn't include, through no fault of anyone, all of the responsible bidders that we could have. I believe we could have got some more bids on this, and might save the city a few crumbs anyway. So, counsel, what I'm going to ask you to do now is either make a motion to award the bid, or I may, I'd really like to ask somebody to make a motion to reject all the bids, and if it's discovered that we can ask for informal quotes to go out and do that, and if not, we'll ask the staff to put it out for bid.
I'll make a motion to reject all bids.
Okay, I have a motion to reject all bids and put it out for informal quote, or if not allowed, then to put them out for bid. The other thing is, it may come in under $50,000, which wouldn't fall under that, but we don't know that yet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion?
I would like to discuss. So I do understand, Council President, that you're not trying to set a precedent as far as bidding process and putting things on the agenda that we have to make a spontaneous decision on, but this is something that's been laying in the underwears for about four years, and that number, 67,750, is not the number that we've, we've heard in the work session, that it'd be less than that. I think the number was 59,000, and I believe that we can even go lower while negotiating with Cox. The problem that I have is that if we reject this bid and put it back out, then our kids will suffer again with this swimming pool. I don't think that's fair to the kids. I understand that we have to do business here, but sometimes it's not a fault of the kids. We shouldn't have, the kids shouldn't have to pay a price for something that we did business-wise, and that's the problem. Talking to some of the engineers, they're saying that if we do this, we won't be in play for the kids to perform or have the events like we're supposed to. We won't meet the deadline, in other words, and that's what I'm scared of, and we've already been sitting on this for four years.
Well, I don't know if we've been sitting on it for four years, Councilman Martin, and I don't want to punish the kids either, but I also don't think that, we may not miss the window of opportunity, we may not, you know, it may come back, and then, and I also don't think that if it doesn't get done, and by the end of January, there will be an opportunity. It takes about a week and a half or two to do this job, and I think that we will find another window of opportunity down the road. The pool's not going to go away. I think that the pool's still, you can still swim in the pool if we put it off for two or three months. I don't think that the pool has to be shut down. It just may have, and then slightly might need some plaster, might have a very small leak, but I don't think, once again, going back to my own personal experience, the pool was not shut down for lack of replastering.
Right.
We can find another window, and we also need to consider that it's not only a precedent of just, and we've done it before, but every circumstance is different, allowing one bid, but I just happen to have some experience in this, and if I didn't, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, but I do have some experience with this, and so that's why the pushback. We also need to make sure that staff gets a message that if we have, if we're up against a deadline, you need to prepare for the fact that we may reject it and allow for sufficient time to come up with Plan B, but when we're only given one option, I think that we need to send a message also that we can't always live that way. We've got to have better, better notice.
Council President, I know you, I know it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison, but if you were ballparking the pool that you had kind of come into contact with, and I know it was not a residential pool, it was a, another commercial pool, different size, not necessarily indoors, but if you were ballparking that, what kind of a possible discount to this original price would you think is potentially out there, man? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I would, I would say the number should have been in the $45,000 to $50,000 range, and I have some other reasons to believe that this bid is on the high side, which I really don't want to, I don't want to bash the company, but I, just from some experience, I have another reason to believe that it's very high, that I don't want to ruin anybody's competitive edge, including the bidder's competitive edge. I don't want to, don't want to comment on that, but I have another compelling reason which I believe I may have shared with you earlier today.
Is this, is this for both the inside and outside pool?
I thank you for asking that. That's, that is a very valuable question.
That's a huge, yeah.
Thank you. I forgot to ask that, because that could have made a huge difference.
Yeah, I think it's time to move forward with this, like you, Councilman Martin.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to reject all bids and put it out for informal bid, or, I'm sorry, informal quote or formal bid if required. So that's a motion and a second. We'll consider that. So all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries, I believe, three to two. Is that correct? Did I get three, Councilman Conyers, I'm assuming you did, and you made the motion, so, okay. Motion carries, three to two.
Who's the second one?
Councilman Conyers was the second. Sorry for all that hoopla, counsel, but I appreciate it.
No worries.
Item number 22 is a resolution, the city council approves amending bid number 23-20 to add the resurfacing of Browns Creek from Fairhope Avenue to Morphe Avenue with an additional cost of $27,762.95, which increases the total resurfacing bid amount from $485,887.80 to $513.650.75. And when I say the total resurfacing, that's for all of the projects that are included in the resurfacing contract. So I will entertain a motion to approve amending the bid and add the additional monies.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I just, I do have to ask, why this section of street? Why was this added, and why is this so important to everyone right now? It's just, every street's important to us, but it just, it's not the most traveled, and it's not the most apparent.
That is a great question that has a great answer.
All right.
When we were, when we were completing the streets to be done and getting it out, and even with COVID and all that, at the same time, the water department ended up cutting that whole road from one end to the other to do a complete upgrade on the water service. When we looked at what the cost to patch an old road back together versus just to go ahead and resurface it, it was in our interest to go ahead and resurface it. So it was, and the water, water department's really smart, they ended up getting me to pay for it. I don't, I don't know how that worked out. Usually it's supposed to work the other way around, but that's the reason why. It has, has a utility cut from one end to the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. We have a motion and a second, right, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
It was sewer, not water.
It was sewer, not water.
I was getting ready to say that. I think it was sewer.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion, counsel? Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 23 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure the annual renewal of support for the VMware Horizon 7 Enterprise licenses for the IT department. The renewal is available for direct procurement through the Omni Partners contract, which has already been nationally bid through their bid process, therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a not-to-exceed cost of $15,081.31. Mr. Montgomery briefed us in the work session. If you have any more questions for him, he's in the back of the room. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to procure the annual renewal.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 24 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure the Palo Alto renewal of the firewall support subscription for the IT department, and the renewal is available for direct procurement through the Omni Partners contract, which has been nationally bid through their bid process, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid at a cost of $44,156.88. And once again, Mr. Montgomery is here for not only this one, but the next two resolutions. So if you have any questions for him, please do so. If not, I'll entertain a motion to procure the Palo Alto renewal.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 25 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure the annual renewal of the 285 licenses of Microsoft Office 365. This will include the online advanced threat protection and five licenses Microsoft audio conferencing for the IT department. The renewals are available for direct procurement through Omni Partners contract, which has been nationally bid through their bid process, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a total cost of $70,086.75. Any questions for Jeff? Okay, I'll just state for those that might be watching online tonight, watching our streaming, that there was quite a bit of discussion on this in the work session, if you're interested in that, you can go back and view the work session. So I will entertain a motion to procure the annual renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have one last question, Jeff? Because I believe that the Office 365 has been, at least for me personally, a very good priced software, you know, are we saving money over the old way of buying whatever? If it was Office 2016 or Office, you know, 2010, you know, you get more of a, you get a full, you know, version of Microsoft Office, but is this saving us any money over buying it, installing it, and then upgrading to another software in about, what, every four or five years when they come up with a major version?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, good question, and you caught me off guard with it. Last I heard, they're doing away with the, doing away with that installation.
They're just going to go ahead and get, deal away with it altogether?
But I believe there was a, a conflict with the Department of Defense, because like in submarines and stuff like that, you can't have Office 365, so I think they're still offering it a limited supply, but for the vast majority of people, you can't buy the standalone version anymore.
Okay.
It's, it's this model now, the software as a service, where you get it through Office 365. I hope I'm correct about that.
When you did that, when you bought it before, just straight up bought it, we had to buy so many seats for that anyway, right?
Yeah, so if, if, if that model was true today, we'd buy 280 licenses for that software, wait two years down the road, buy it again.
Do it again.
Buy it again. Whereas when you have it with Office 365, you buy, you get the license, and it's just continually updated, upgraded, and patched throughout.
I just wondered if that, you know, if the new method, seems to me I'm saving money by doing that.
You are.
I wondered if we are.
Yeah, we're saving money. I mean, it was, it was expensive when you bought it as a standalone product, so if we went that route again, we would have to buy everybody a license for Microsoft Office, plus we would have to have a exchange server on premise, so then you would have to buy a server and the maintenance for that with, with the exchange licenses.
We didn't do that last time we bought all that software, did we?
It's real expensive. Sir?
We didn't do that last time we bought all that software, did we?
No.
Okay.
No. So, I mean, this is, this is the model that they, that they're moving to, and we're just kind of along for the ride.
No, I don't, I don't doubt that. I just wondered if we were saving money. I feel like there's a, my perceptions, we're saving a little bit by moving to this new platform.
All right.
All right. I believe we have a motion and a second. Lisa?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of procuring the annual renewal of the Microsoft Office 365 licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 26 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure professional services to migrate the backups for the old AS400 system to the Cloud400 to provide a way to access the files needed to archive the information from source data products with an estimated cost of $17,800, which includes the LPAR hosting for 12 months. And I believe we discussed this at length, and the hope is that we only need it for one year, and then we have all this data migrated to the cloud for future access to this data. So any questions can be addressed to Jeff. If you have none, I will entertain a motion to procure these professional services to migrate these backups.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 27 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to approve the procurement of the spreadsheet server, AKA the report writer software and training from Global Software LLC, Doing Business as Insight Software, for the treasury and finance departments, and authorizes procurement based on the options allowed by the Code of Alabama. The amount for this procurement includes the software license, training, and maintenance fees in an amount of $16,619.50. Ms. Creets, our city treasurer, briefed us on this in the work session. Do you have any questions for Kim? for Kim? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this procurement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? I'm supposed to laugh. Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 28 is a resolution, the City Council hereby amends resolution number 3827-20 and approves the revised skater technician job description as presented. Mayor Sullivan is here to ask any questions that you may have about this. We should have the details. About three pages of description there. Okay, hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to amend the resolution and approve the revised job description.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 29 is a resolution, the Fairhope City Council accepts the gift of furniture and accessories to the City of Fairhope being used in the mayor's office and lobby from Fairhope Furniture valued at $3,279. And I sure would like to thank them for that gift. It's very nice. I'll entertain a motion to accept that gift.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of accepting the gift of furniture and accessories, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 30 is appointments to the Fairhope Schools, Public Schools Commission. The nominees for a three-year term are appointments of Dr. Paul Hanson and Mrs. Amy Foley, and a reappointment of Mr. Hill Robinson for a three-year term, which shall end December 2023. Entertain a motion to make the appointments of the nominees?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussions?
I just wanted to say, I think Dr. Hannon, right, with?
It's Hannon, yeah. It's, is it Hannon?
It is Hannon.
Or Hanson. Oh, okay, let's get that right. Yeah, I have Hanson in here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't publish his name incorrectly.
It's H-A-N-N-O-N, then?
Yes.
That's probably that autocorrect in the word that got you right there. I noticed a few other words back there, you were talking about, about three straight resolutions. I read it right, though, I covered for you. Okay, so, the motion should read for the nominees, which was Dr. Paul Hannon.
Very good.
And just make that clerical change. So, I believe we have a motion in a second to appoint the nominees. So, all those in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 31 is an application for a restaurant liquor license by Corey Nauman. Did I say that right? Nauman, for Outpost 406 at Fairhope, doing business as Outpost 406 at Fairhope, located at 58 North Section Street in Fairhope, Alabama. Chief, you're here, is there any reason to deny this application? Is everything in order?
Everything's fine.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to approve this application for a restaurant liquor license?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 32, I'll read this resolution real quick, since it wasn't in the package for the public. It is being resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2020 Ford F-150 Supercab four-by-two pickup truck for the police department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, and this vehicle is a replacement for the animal control vehicle that was submerged in water from Hurricane Sally. Claim was filed with the insurance, and the city has received funds that will cover the cost. The following is an Alabama State Department of Purchasing contract information. You see the bid number there, T191A, for the 2020 Ford F-150 Supercab, a cost of $24,782.00, adopted on the 14th day of December. So I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you've come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Jeff, do you have some city business?
I wanted to clarify. I was, I was wrong. You can, you can buy the Office version. So I just did some quick, quick calculations. If you were to move that software on premise, it'd be, it'd be $166,600. That was a quick estimate of purchasing all of the Office software exchange and the server.
$96,000 more.
Right.
All right, very good.
So, I was.
Are we doing good?
I want to clarify that. Yeah, you still can buy the disc of Office 2019.
I thought it might have been that kind of costly.
Yeah.
I think we did good. Very good. Anyone from the public? Okay, all close public participation, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.